And Weaver with its marshes becomes an exciting place as one of the best few of the few wetlands in the county. They have breeding evidence of thirty-two species, but the highlight was a family of coots who are not seen anywhere else in the county. And they're there again this year.
Wow.
So this is the more detailed report and I'll turn it over to whoever gets it. And I can send all electronically, but I wasn't sure who to send it to, so I will do that too.
Keep trying to share with staff.
If anybody has any questions on that matter.
Thank you, Beth, for such a great line.
Thank you.
Invaluable. It's unbelievable.
Beth, I've been hearing a car outside our building here.
Oh, I hear. You know, I'm thinking I should include Schumacher. Maybe I'll try and get up there this year because I've heard there's some interesting things at particular just approval of the world. Yeah. And somebody just told me today they had a Kingbird family out at Meadowbrook.
Yes.
Which you'd seen them too.
I don't know where the desk is.
Yeah, okay. Someone showed me some pictures today, which is cool.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll hit my recorder.
So thanks for asking. If you're interested in any of the parks, let me know.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
I think we need crew, crew lessons. I don't know what this. All right. Next.
Sam, do you want to come up here so that you can speak into the microphone?
Okay.
Although I don't know if our microphones are working. It seems.
Well, I can. I can determine.
It seems like he was having some technical difficulties. That's okay. Sam is, he's doing an internship this summer with us. He's working both at the cottage as well as at Phillips. And he is a political science major with a public administration interest.
Yes.
Okay. And he's been doing really great work. In fact, I've also hired him to work in our office until he has to go back to school because he's doing really good work for us and he's very bright. So I'll let him speak a little bit more about his background, where he's going to school, and yeah, or interests.
Yes. So I go to school at Eastern Illinois University. I'm an incoming senior, so I graduate in the spring.
Yay!
But I'm very excited about.
Good.
Hoping to go back and get a master's directly afterwards. And I'd like to work in local or state government in some way in the future, so fantastic.
What kinds of things are you doing at the cottage and at Phillips? What sort of things are you seeing?
It's mostly, I've been, you know, helping Karen and Sandy like with their, I don't really, like the bill processing. I don't really know.
And deposits.
And the deposits and stuff like that.
Record keeping.
And yeah, mostly it's been like just helping do some work that just hasn't, you know, that's like tedious, that just hasn't, you know, that Katie and Karen might not have time.
And a lot of tedious work.
So, yeah.
And you're a PD program participant, is that right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I did the youth summer theater program for like five or six years. So that's how I knew about the Urbana Park District and everyone that I knew there that worked there really loved working there. So I just, this was like the first place that I thought of about getting some experience, you know, in an intergovernmental organization, so.
So what productions were you in again? What did you do?
I started with the Anything Goes.
Yeah.
We did The Music Man. I was the mayor. I saw that. We did Annie and I was the butler. And I just have done so many. There was a while in high school, in junior high, where I was doing like, I think like three or four shows a year. So it was almost, I was always in a show, basically, so.
Cool, cool.
But yeah, I had a lot of great memories at PD, so.
Sounds great. Well, it's wonderful to have you back.
Thanks.
Thank you so much for working around your work schedule to come in tonight.
Oh, yeah.
No problem.
Have a good one.
You don't have to stay.
Hello, everybody. Glad you're here.
So I'm introducing Kelly. She is our community program intern. And Peyton, he's our outreach and wellness intern. Hi.
Tell us who that's all you're doing.
Sure. So I'm the outreach and wellness intern and I have a couple things that I had already done earlier this summer, including strawberry jam. I helped out Judy quite a bit over at the nature center and I was like the volunteer coordinator essentially. And unfortunately got rained out this year, but that's all right. And the main reason I did take up that role.
I'm interested in events and special events in general, and that's kind of where my experience background lies. Recent graduate from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign with a recreation, sport and tourism degree. Emphasis, if, you know, looking back, I would definitely like to lean a little bit more towards recreation if I could, but you know, you can get experience where you can get it, and this has been thus far, so.
Good, good.
I'm Kelly and I actually just graduated with Peyton to an RST from U of I. So we graduated in May and we'll get our diplomas in August once we finish this. But yeah, I've been helping Nikki out with art camp and some art projects, some of the art installations in the park around the area, in the parks around the area, which has been really cool. My emphasis was tourism, but kind of like Peyton, I've definitely, I'm a recreation student. So it's been really awesome getting an opportunity to work in a park district setting. And I'd worked for the Splash program this past year and I didn't expect it to turn into an internship. It was kind of just a job to get hours and experience and then the opportunity came up to have an internship here. And it's been really interesting to see, you know, I was a supervisor in an after-school program and now seeing kind of the other side of things and kind of everything that went into the facilitation of something like that. So yeah, it's been really awesome.
Great.
Fantastic.
Yeah, we're blessed with really good, with really good interns and a lot of our interns have ended up sitting around, sitting around the table.
Be three of them at least.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so it's.
Oh, yeah, Horgan, H-O-R-G-A-N.
Great, thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Very much. Thanks, Nikki.
Is her last name? Melissa has given us an UpDak chair report. We don't need to, we don't need to talk much about it, although I do, I do want to say that I thought this was a very clever idea because what they divided the group up into three and each group was taken around to see three of the spots at Crystal Lake Park. So they got a really good sense of what was going on and more, more in-depth and easier than, than moving the whole herd of people around. I thought it was just, it was, it was a very clever idea and I think it worked extraordinarily well. Everybody seemed to be very happy with it. So I congratulate you because it was, it was a great idea. All right. Consent agenda. All right. Is there anything on this old consent agenda that any of you would like taken out? That's the next thing we need to talk about. Speak now or make a motion.
I'd move.
Please, if you would read for the record.
Oh, you want me to read them all out? Okay.
That would be great.
All right, okay.
Keeps it clear.
All right. So what we have, what we are approving are the minutes of four June 2019, the board study session, the minutes of eleven June 2019, the regular board meeting, action to accept philanthropy, philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, the monthly reports, which include administration, planning and ops, recreation, also the approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and action on resolution 2019 dash to enter into a agreement for 2008 South Ray Street. I move that we, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Roger.
I move that we approve all the action items on the consent agenda except, and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Roger, we'll start with you for a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Oops. Sorry. I stepped out of order. Go ahead. Aye. And me too, aye. All right. So there we are. We are now to our financial report. So Katie, you're up.
Okay. I'm going to be speaking about the performance for the Urbana Park District for the month of June. We received our first two property tax dispersments in June. Woo-hoo! The first one was pretty small. It was whatever was collected in May, I think. And then the bills were really due July first. They didn't go out till close to the very end of May and then they really started flowing in. And I think the treasurer kind of got some pressure to get that first disbursement out to the taxing districts as soon as possible. So we got the second disbursement on June 26th or 27th. And that was big. It was like 1.5 million dollars. So that's why you can see our total revenues at this point in June are 2.1 million and our total expenditures for this period are 1.3 million. So it's pretty early in the year to make any assumptions about our performance, but that's where it's at this point. Page two, this is our capital budget. And revenues for the period were 26,000 and expenditures were 145,000. And we are gearing up to have a big year of spending. We have about a $2 million placeholder in the budget for expenditures in addition to the usual ones because of our big push with Crystal Lake Park and other projects that is upcoming this fiscal year. So you can see in the middle column there where it says the budget, our budget for total expenditures is 3.3 million. So that'll get us back closer to the bottom of where our fund balance should be in that fund. I don't know how far we'll push this year, but it's pretty early in the year. I haven't talked about these reports much, so I'll sprinkle some of that info in as we go. And finally, on page three, all funds district-wide. At this point, at the end of June, we have $8 million in fund balance if the district were to end today. That's the amount remaining in our funds. Following that are the departmental reports or the primary fund reports for the general fund, the recreation fund, the museum fund, and the indoor pool.
Right.
So everything's pretty early on at this point. So as it gets further in, I'll be able to give more detail into performance. The next report I'll touch on is the treasures report. All of our funds are represented on this first page and where the dollar amounts are invested in which financial institutions for a total of $9,545,254.95. On page two, at the top, these are the account, the amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts. So we have 7.8 million of our 9.5 invested in interest-bearing accounts and the remainder is basically in our operating account waiting to be spent. That's the, we have very few non-interest-bearing accounts. It's mostly our accounts at Chase for our vendor on our payroll and our operating account. They don't earn interest. No changes in our inter-fund loans. They're still the same as they've been the last several months. And dispersments for this period were $1 million. And that is a combination of, because we were still paying for things from April, and it's really big payroll time for us in June and July and August with our, all of our camps and all of our pools up and running, so.
Pretty much more than double, right?
Yeah, usually I would say it's like 500 to 600,000 in like a slow, normal time of year. So this is our peak time, so this isn't unusual at all.
Now, would, if it hadn't been so rainy, would it have been even more since the pool would be?
It could be, yeah, because they did really close the pool down. You know, a quarter of a million dollars of this was bond payments that we made in June, too. So I mean, there's that. We always have our bond payments in June and December, so that's, that was about 260,000. So that was a chunk of it, too. So, so I present the treasures report to you for audit.
I move to accept the treasures report for audit.
Second. Any discussion? One in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. In the month of June, you can see the areas with the asterisks highlighted in the capital budgets where there were, was activity for the period. So we received funds for tributes and donations. And at the June board meeting, we also received the donation or the grant from American Water that was presented, so that was also deposited. You can see that in the activity. We had spending on tributes and donations. We had spending on the PRC, PRC playground, which I just heard yesterday is now open. We, sorry, I can't see this very well.
Oh, we painted, we painted the pavilions at King Park. The Meadowbrook house repairs are ongoing, so there was some spending there. And we also spent some funds to BCA on the design of the Liel Park improvements. Oh, and also we paid for the Showmobile. Sorry, I almost forgot that. The 105, 345 was paid in June. We received it in May, but we paid it in June.
That's the way to do it.
In the 2018 capital budget, you can see some negative number there in the 20, in the June 30th column. That's a normal audit entry. So any work that was completed in April for retainage or payables that are still outstanding, we book them as expense in the prior fiscal year, but then we reverse it out to wait for the actual payment to happen in the current fiscal year. So in the end, it's, it's a wash, but the payment gets recorded to where the work was actually done, to the fiscal year where those services were performed. And so once we actually make the payment on the James Room there where it's the 12,200, that'll clear out. But I just wanted to explain that. A little further down, we purchased a one-ton dump truck. There was a little bit of spillover into this budget to pay for the Showmobile as well. And then we had some spending on Crystal Lake down at the bottom there. In the 2017 budget, there was just two more audit entries related to the ITEP project. So those are those two negative numbers. So that was for work that Stark completed through the date of the project and then, oh, sorry, one of them was ITEP and then one of them was the sediment basin retainage also. So that project is still out there as well. And then there's an itty-bitty bit spent there on construction crew projects. So we had a little bit of spending on, out of the $500,000 general fund transfer as well on Crystal Lake, which was mostly payments to ERA and then also, it was also sediment basin related payments. So now Andy and Derek may have some.
Yep. I was going to start with Perkins Road, Phase Three. We're waiting on some permitting still to get completed before we can have any work actually take place within the wetland itself. The contractor, Diggett, has still been out on the site. They've done some mowing and road and ditch work and this week they're doing the drainage tile that would go through the large enclosure of the dog park. And then we're anticipating the Army Corps permit to be wrapped up probably the end of this month. And then starting in August, the heavy machinery then will be able to get down into the wetland and start draining some of the water there in preparation for some of the earthwork at the site.
So why is it the Army Corps?
It's water that will be leaving our site into saline.
Huh.
So then they have oversight of basically that process.
There's also city and DNR permitting that goes through, but.
Oh, so they're not the only ones.
No.
I think DNR declined to have any concern. They felt like it was an overall improvement, but we're wanting to make sure, so.
All righty.
Of course, usually the one that takes a little more time to work through.
We had to work with them for the Creek, Douglas Creek, right?
Blair Park planning. Tomorrow evening, we will have a public open house at the pavilion at Blair Park. If we have bad weather, it will be at the middle school. It's four to six PM. We've been working with Upland Design and we'll have a few boards out at the site for people to react to, do a survey, tell us how they use Blair Park currently, be able to rank a list of amenities that are shown in the draft master plan. And then Kara is going to use that data for AusLAD grant for future improvements to Blair next year. Last meeting, I talked a little bit about Liel Park, that path and extended parking. Our bid opening was, has actually been pushed back to early September. The city notified BCA during our process that the setback area off of University Avenue had recently been extended from 15 feet to 25 feet, which impacts our plan for the parking lot at that site. So Tim and Derek have talked with the city and we'll have an application for a variance that will go through the proper process with them and then have a city approval at their first meeting in September. So we would anticipate that we would have a board action at the September meeting on that bid then.
Did you get us, go ahead.
So we were, we were compensated for, for lost property at a, at a 15-foot setback, right?
It was more the true impacts. It wasn't really property loss.
It wasn't per square footage.
Right.
Okay. So this doesn't impact, they're not going to be offering us.
But that did impact because we lost some of our right, right? So our new measure line, you know, is different, but kind of a combination. Hopefully it's just a variance process and.
Okay.
Did you get a sense from the city? They weren't thinking, no, never, we'll never.
At a staff level, it seems like they're supportive. They want to make sure that we've looked at every option and we have. We actually have a backup option that we can go to that wouldn't require variance, but it's not as ideal.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's, it has less accessibility and reduces a few more safety concerns. It also has more tree loss involved. So we'll document all that and then we'll go before the zoning group. And if they approve it, we'll feel pretty good about moving forward with bidding. If there's concern or questions, we'll resort back to our backup plan.
Uh huh, uh huh. Okay. Do you need any lobbying on our part?
I think we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a business site. So I can see that, I mean, I would think that would give them some sense of giving us a bit more leeway than you would have if you were actually having a business that you needed that, I hope.
Katie mentioned playground opened last Wednesday, so we've, I know Mark's been pushing out some notices through social media and our website. I emailed Kanan Academy as well since they were a big part of our process in the selection of the final playground, so. It's been open for almost a week now.
It's not completely done, though, right?
Oh, well, there's a ramp that needed to get poured, but it's open.
Playground, too? Okay. I had to look at it.
We're also planning an open house for the night of UpDak in August.
Oh, good.
So kind of a come see all that's been done over the last few years.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of combine that with the UpDak meeting and we're going to have one of our chefs cook a dish.
Uh huh.
Show off the kitchen a little bit and I imagine we'll do our, I don't know what's on the agenda, hamburgers, hot dog, I don't know what that is, but.
And the new sink will be there?
Hopefully.
That should be in, not this next Wednesday, but the Wednesday after.
Yeah. It really looks fabulous.
It does. It just, yeah. I took Fred down to see it today and it's, it really is just, it's a, it's a beautiful space. It's just, and it looks extraordinarily useful. It's just, it's terrific. Yeah. Kudos to you guys. All right. What are we doing? Executive director. Is that it? Tim, I think you're, you're up.
Let's see. First, just want to thank all the staff that has worked very hard for months, working on the 2019-2020 budget and goals. We take, for folks listening at home or watching, just want to reassure, staff takes a lot of care at putting our budgets together and implementing the budget, spending carefully each, each day, each week, each month. So we take a lot of pride in that. I'm really excited about it because I think we have some great goals and it's also a process that all of our staff are involved. So everybody has some input, they're responsible for getting prices or talking about quantities of use or condition of materials so that they can plan to, you know, replace things. It just moves right through the whole organization. So we're very pleased with that process.
Yeah, I think you only have to look at the, at the financial report to see how, how close people come in, what a good job they do of thinking it through.
And again, it's something we consider very prideful and, you know, considering other groups struggle with finances, it's something we consistently look at and talk about and plan. So just wanted to reassure our public and taxpayers we're on top of it.
Well, not only do you think and plan, it actually works.
Exactly.
That's the.
And I include the capital budget and all of that, all the finance stuff, investments, everything.
Yep.
I think we discussed Liel Park. I think we have a plan and approach for that, so we'll work through that. I did include in the correspondence file, there was a program from the CU Special Rec event on June 29th, the Welcome to Songville, the musical production. Absolutely fantastic. Was so proud of our, our participants. We had Wesley Mathis Church, so we were in the upstairs, had the big stage and the big room. So our previous performances didn't have a, a stage and so that was one of our goals, which we graciously were allowed to come and perform there. But everybody had a great time. The families had a great job. I think the musicians and the director and just the writers and it was just really neat. And they also had, for the dancing and the moves, they had helpers that were dressed in black that sort of just blended in the crowd.
Oh, sure.
It was just really, really well done. I was very pleased and I talked with Corky, we think that this program area might be something we might submit for an award through IPRA as well as an innovative program because I don't know any, many of the other special rec groups that are doing both film and stage production.
Yep.
So it's pretty impressive. Obviously, we live in a community that allows access to lots of talented people, so we're very appreciative of their efforts and it really came together, well-attended, was very fun. Little hot upstairs in that room. I don't think it's air-conditioned at the church, but we, we had the windows on and open and fans going. It was great. Follow-up, met with Rick Manning from the sanitary district. I think I'd reported on, working on updating all of our leases, getting, they've had some policy changes through their industry and just trying to get everything in order on that, so that'll probably be coming forward in a month or so. Trying to streamline, get all of our leases on a, on new timeline. Probably new review dates. Rick was suggesting every 10 years. I think that seemed reasonable. I even suggested five years would be fine with us. So whatever he thinks is best for them, we can work with that. But the real opportunity there to talk about what we're doing and sharing at each site is, I think, really critical. We also discussed, made plans for the eventual replacement of the Crystal Lake Park Bridge that contains the sanitary district's piping. They're working with us on the eventual replacement of that. And also discussed the pump station at Meadowbrook and the need to be able to screen it, you know. It's just one of those elements that after you look at it for a while, while it's functional, it just seems like it sticks out a little bit like a sore thumb.
Just right there off, off Windsor.
Yeah, right, just south of the bridge there. So they're willing and ready to work with us on that, so we're excited about that. I think I reported last month that we were planning a discussion, just a small discussion on climate change. We've had our first meeting, just a variety of community members, eclectic group, but really the idea was to find out what are other groups doing? What are people in Urbana thinking about? What do our residents think about that? What can we do as a local public agency? So obviously, we talked about things that are obviously right at hand. What kind of plants, looking at the future, how can we conserve water? How do we think about any of our other activities that use energy or chemicals or anything that sort of intensifies or adds to that? And so I think what we would likely plan is a series of discussions just to get a better feel. Mary Ellen Rollner is one of our participants. She's the executive director of the Forest Preserve. It's interesting because we both kind of, at the same time, one day at Rotary meeting, mentioned we'd been thinking about what kind of goals could we bring forward to our boards and our communities that relate to climate change? And so, hey, maybe we should talk and start to collaborate. Had a series of similar conversations with a few others in the, in the community and so we're just kind of talking about, you know, what is our role? What can be done for such a concerning issue? It should be something that we continue to talk about and that's in the forefront of our activities, not something that we never talk about and don't address publicly. So again, there's no necessarily huge agenda or a project or an effort, but hopefully with more talk, we could get focused in what is the best way we go forward? What's a good role for the park district? The other agencies or individuals or groups certainly could decide for themselves, but it's a nice sounding board and a good way to bring ideas together. You know, I think the short of it, everyone's looking at the massive impacts, but also, how do you make change day to day? And what's reasonable, and how do you introduce things like that, and keep people on board and not alienate more people in that process? So, it's kind of a daunting task to take on, but we're just entering in and seeing where it leads us. So, I think we're all open and touched on a few projects that, you know, could go forward, and just would like to see more people get enthused and connected with that idea. You know, we know the City of Urbana has, you know, a whole suite of things they're doing with sustainability, and certainly, we can learn and collaborate, you know, together on things like that, but there are groups that we haven't had discussions with, and so it was kind of refreshing to bring people together.
I was talking with, can I interrupt you, or should you want to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead, while we're on topic.
I was talking with a friend in Minnesota, and she lives in a Minneapolis-St. Paul suburb, but in, you know, in actually, a small city. And that city has compost locations for dropping off any sort of compostable, including meat and bones and all that, all that sort of stuff. And they have also, I believe, banned the use of plastic for, you know, sort of the doggy, what we used to call doggy bags.
Yep.
And, you know, that's good, so they're doing something, but it's gotten me thinking about the old days, and I don't think, another commissioners have been here so long, but in the old days, there was a group called HIPS, Household Involved, also was involved in pollution solutions?
Sure, yep.
And Urbana was really a leader for a long time, and we're not, we're not doing anything now. And I think that that's, there are people who still have really firm convictions about taking care of the environment, and maybe it just needs, you know, a person to spark it, I don't know what, but if the person doesn't step forward, I can see that as something that we could try to instigate, to try to find that person. I mean, I believe we're the sort of logical group in the city, because it's such import to us. And so, I'm really in favor of looking hard and trying to find this, and it's not our job to do this, but to find and energize people in the community, to give them room, space, time, ideas, whatever, whatever to do this, because they...
Well, it's interesting to staff, because we talk all the time about, you know, at a time where we've educated our public about the importance of water resource, and recycling and reusing, and the things, we're seeing our recycling opportunities are drying up, and, you know, there are less places to take things, and limited drop-off sites, and I think the Styrofoam site, you know, at Dart, is probably the only one in the area. So, it's kind of, while we're achieving more success and awareness, we're also losing resource opportunities to sort of rework our approaches. So, I think we do need to really focus on that and start talking about that.
Right, yeah, I do too, and I don't quite know how to...
Well, you know, obviously, things that are easier to do, fleet evaluations, you know, switching over to different types of fuels, that, you know, so I think the conversation was around, one of the low-hanging fruits, essentially, what things could we go to that wouldn't be a lot, that may be our choices, or, you know, that you could do through purchasing, all the way up to one of the big, hard things, and how do you start to address that? But if we never talk about it, I don't think we're gonna ever make any more, you know, inroads to improving that.
Right.
So, we'll continue to, agreed to continue to meet and see where that leads us.
Nancy, were they using instead of plastic bags for dog?
Yeah, I was curious.
No, this was for takeout from restaurants.
Oh, I thought you said dog.
Doggy bags, oh, no, I was thinking...
I was thinking the same with you there.
I thought so too.
No, 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 no.
I know.
No, I think the newspaper covered them.
Good question.
No, this is from, you know, takeout when you take, you know, what you haven't eaten from the huge portions at the restaurant, so no plastic, no. I just use the Styrofoam recycling today, and a lot of the things that were in there were Styrofoam, and I'm now taken to taking my own container.
Right, exactly.
When we eat out.
Those are the types of things. I did want to mention those who went to the lunch at state conference, or I think there was a session, somebody spoke on trends, was one of the sessions or at state conference, but that speaker talked about that same issue of, we've created this awareness of recycling and earth-friendly practices, at the same time, markets and everything's shifting, and so there's less opportunity, places to take things, and things are starting to end back up in landfills. So, I think it's an opportunity, Chicago Park District was talking about a big move to consider banning single-use plastic things. So, the biggest offender is water bottles. Think of all the sports events they do, and we do, and the answer is a water bottle, that's somebody, that's that too. And so, now, we talked a little about that, those are harder, you know, because then you think of alternatives, how do you do it in a sanitary, easy way, so it becomes a little more challenging. But, again, discussing and addressing those types of things, you know, to be able to come up with solutions, we've got to do that.
Well, and I think we have to, I think we have to start looking at legislation, because I think that, I mean, I was just hearing on the radio today about how China isn't taking recyclables, and nor is India, or whoever else was, the Philippines, or Thailand, or somebody. Well, so, that means that we have to start encouraging our government to put money into recycling industries here, so we don't have to pay to ship it, we don't have to have the carbon footprint of the shipping. So, I think that's another, another part of the thing that we have to start encouraging people to do, is to look at it on a legislative...
My hunch is, if we stay focused and we continue to discuss it and provide positive inroads, we would definitely have a role in leading that discussion and probably bring some opportunity to our community.
Tim, on the other end of that, is there, is there, has there been an effort on the part of the park district to look at what the impact on the district itself is going to be of the inevitable changes that are coming in terms of major precipitation events? Since I've been walking at Meadowbrook twice, that lower bridge has been topped by floods. I know we had, we've had trouble with flooding up north.
Yep.
There's going to be migration of insects that we're not used to, there's going to be changes in the hardiness zones of various plants, and I just wondered if...
We discussed and touched on all those, kind of the first two-hour discussion of, you know, kind of that range of things. What are we likely to experience? And change in, you know, planting regimes, and insects, and invasives, and all those things are probably realistic, they're happening now.
Yeah.
So, you know, and then the water issues, everything from too much water to not enough, how do we begin to conserve water and think of it as a resource and not a waste product? So, I think those are all, obviously, if we can get more sophisticated and find ways to make connections with our actions and people, and make another way to connect that, so people understand that, that's even better. So, that's kind of where we're trying to go. But again, just kind of by the bootstraps, pulling it up, certainly, there's models, there's information out there, but there's not a, here's how to transform your community guide, and you just go through a couple of steps, and the next thing, you're living in a different world. It's obviously not like that, so we're gonna have to painstakingly identify and target and see where we can make improvement. But it's worth doing, so we're energized. Moving on, let's see, I think we covered the Blair Park Open Park evening, four to six tomorrow night. Look forward to seeing everybody there. Continue to work on the Meadowbrook Wandel Sculpture Garden entry space with our donor. We're excited about that, getting closer to final designs. Just want to mention, we have the Carl Urbana Park District gift agreement on the agenda tonight. Want to thank all the rec staff and Corky for working on that with the Carl staff, and just getting that, took a long time to get there, but it's on the agenda, and we're grateful and excited about that. For the State Planning Research Grant for the 217 KRT expansion, working with RPC, they're starting and continuing with their literature review to collect information. The RPC and City of Urbana staff are doing traffic counts for pets, bikes, vehicles at the six locations along the railroad corridor there in our study area, and we're collecting information on existing conditions in that study area. So, our next during committee meeting will be in August, so we'll hopefully get some feedback and just keep working through that grant project. Working on a project with one of our UpDak members, Amita Sinha, she's one of my colleagues in landscape architecture. She's been interested for a long time with this idea of sustainable parks, and I know she's talking, she mentioned today, she talks to Roger when she sees him at the park.
Yeah.
So, we suggested that he be one of the interview people, because he has an extensive background and knowledge about that. But the idea, we started talking a few years ago, she's real interested in why are Urbana, some of our parks, basically our signature parks, why are they like that? They're larger, they have large ecological features, or environmental bends, natural areas, if you will. She's just been fascinated, because parks in other parts of the world are very different, and there's a lot of parks in this area that are, you know, different, or what we might consider more your traditional neighborhood park. So, just starting to look at a two-year study to sort of unearth and find out information, so we'll be working. Our goal is to get UpDak working on that project also, so we want to kind of integrate that, she's willing to work with UpDak. She'll be back and forth with some teaching experiences in India, she's willing to extend her UpDak window, so I think it's a really good opportunity. Our hope is to get something published eventually, so...
Oh, great.
Could, you know, bring something to the UPD as far as, you know, our innovative approach. But today, we talked a lot about how did we get here, our history and the people that helped shape that. It's not something that just somebody woke up and thought, well, let's start changing parks, you know, what happened in the very beginning with early, you know, values that were established here, and leadership styles from the board, and leaders at the district over the years. So, we have a lot to be proud of, and I think being able to collect and catalog all this information would be fantastic, so we're excited about that.
Yeah, it was nice having J.C. Blair to start with, wasn't it?
Well, exactly, starting out on the right foot. I think that was everything, and I can answer any questions. Oh, a couple, my last updates, reminders, the next Urbana Downtown Get Down is coming up, that's Saturday, July 27th, from 5:00 to 8:00 in downtown. Not trying to steal any of Nancy's report, but I did just want to remind folks, the Summer Youth Theater events are coming up, July 25th through the 28th, and the art fair planned for Saturday, August 3rd at Crystal Lake is on schedule, and we're looking forward to that as our first art fair event. Usually, Michael would cover those things, but because a few of these are new, and we're trying to get people out there, want to make sure we keep saying and promoting them, so... But I can answer any questions if you have them.
Tim, do you want me to do a quick update on the Crystal Lake pool?
Corky and I agreed over the summer, let's find under the director's report, an update on the pool, because it's something we're all interested in, but there is a great spot in the agenda.
All right.
So, obviously, last year was a great year. So, last year actually was our best year at the pool. This year, we started out a little slow, had a lot of rain, and questionable cooler weather in the beginning as well. But just a little update, so last year, at this time, we had brought in $194,000 roughly, and that's between passes, punch cards, daily admission.
Oh, so this isn't dip and dots?
Um, no, that would be dip and dots.
Okay, all right.
This year, we're close to like $153,500, so we're about $40,000 away from...
Oh, that's not bad.
Where we were last year. We've started making a lot of that up over the last couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Last year, at this time, we had had $23,800 patrons, and this year, we're at $19,000, so about 4,000 people, different, but...
Considering that all of the bad weather, that's incredibly good.
I did an analysis after Memorial Day weekend this year, because I think last year, Memorial Day weekend, like Corky said, it was the best start to the summer we've had at the pool yet, but I think we made like $30,000 just in that weekend, and it was closer to like 10 or something this year, 15 maybe. But I did an analysis, since the pool opened, which we didn't have a Memorial Day that week, that first year, because we didn't open until the 4th of July, but every Memorial Day weekend that we've been open, it's directly related to the average temperature of the weekend. I mean, directly related. So, it was really interesting, I made a little graph, and I share it with Corky, he can bring it in to show you guys. So, but even a couple of degrees makes a big difference in how much money you bring in that weekend.
Right.
So... Well, I'll tell you, one of the genius strokes that I know a lot of people appreciate is toddler swim time in the morning. I mean, I think the next thing to do now is to have a rent-a-toddler. I'll tell you, it's, you know, there aren't very many people at the pool, the nade eaters are just finishing, and, you know, there might be, I mean, easily, there might be 30 parents and kids in the pool, but it still has that feel of it's really just like a neighborhood picnic.
Water features are turned down some.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's a perfect time, and I stopped and talked to somebody when I was leaving on Monday, and they said how much they enjoyed it and how great it was, because, you know, it's a, in a good day, it's a mob scene in there, and those little guys just...
What time is it?
Eight, no, 9 till 11?
11, I believe.
9 till 11, 9 till 11:30? Yeah, I mean, they were extraordinarily...
Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Happy to have that time. It just, it's, it's so clever, because it uses a blank period of time that gets people in who wouldn't, it builds up their water comfort, it builds up their familiarity with the pool, so those kids will keep coming and coming and coming and coming.
Home in time for a nap.
Well, and it tires them out.
Exactly, it's like circadian rhythm.
Yeah, it is, it was just, it was extraordinarily clever to do that, and it's, I mean, not only from my point of view, but I think the people who are participating really enjoy it and appreciate it. And I see a lot of different people, it's not the same folks and the same kids that are every time.
My kids are part of the mob.
Are they?
They've been gone almost every, well, as much as they can, but no dip and dots.
Yeah, no, and it's looking, it's looking great.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's terrific all the way around.
Thanks, thanks Corky.
Well, thanks. I did bring two pieces of the pool tonight, other than that. Okay, so liaison. Roger, do you want to tell us about the...
Yeah, I was pleased that we were, that Michael and I were able to be electronically ushered into the finance study meeting. He was in France, I was in bed sick, so we, between the two of us, but it's, I'm very interested in what Spear is suggesting, what the staff has worked with. By refunding our bonds, we'll pay lower interest rates, there's also the opportunity for us to do that in such a way that it would generate a considerable amount of money that could be applied toward Crystal Lake, or to get people interested in health and wellness. So, we agreed with staff that Spear should be invited to the August 5th study session so that we can all hear that.
Yes, I'm glad that you decided that, yeah.
I think it's gonna be, I think you're gonna be very pleased with what they suggest. There, there's always some downside, but I don't see much of one at this point. So, it was, I thought it was very encouraging and very well done.
Yeah, good, good. I think they have served us, our relationship with them has really been greatly beneficial to us, yeah.
I've been really pleased with how smooth the transition of Dave's retirement has been, because Aaron's just hit the ground running, and we're in good hands, I think. He's, and he's got a park district background too, he worked at a park district.
Oh, really? Oh, that's terrific.
Yeah, so he really understands our business, and yet, he has the finance side of it down, so I'm excited to work with him more. He'll be there a long time, I bet.
That is terrific, well, I'll be glad to hear what they have to say, hoping I can understand most of it.
Oh, you will, he does a good job.
Yeah, yeah, Dave is always, yeah, the trouble is that he never can go home and tell anybody about it, I get it when he's telling me, going home and keeping it all straight.
If I can understand it, lying in bed, running a fever, and...
Okay, all right, well, that's...
...of it, with a paper in front of me, I mean, you can do it.
Okay, all right, all right.
Guarantee you.
I'm open, I'm open. Okay, good, thank you, that's, that's, that's good to know. All right, policy study group.
Um...
We haven't met.
We met in May to review personnel policy on the following topics, records, retention, social media, employer reimbursement, and nursing breastfeeding, and we expect to meet again in the fall for further policy review.
All right. Roger, you're on again with the foundation.
Yeah, we met yesterday, so it's fresh in my mind. The sense of the foundation at this point is, in terms of the campaign, as things have somewhat slowed down, the chair, Fred Delcoeman, is encouraging members of the board to work on identifying people that may be folks that should be asked, and also encouraging members to host parties in their home for, to invite people to, and talk about the foundation. They, I was very pleased to hear, Tim and Ellen and I had gone to a presentation by its...
United Way?
No, it was, was it United Way?
They hosted it there.
They hosted it, but it was a fundraiser.
Right.
It was a...
Yeah, the...
Tony fundraiser.
Local fundraising chapter.
But they had given us a presentation on giving circles, which is a completely different approach to fundraising, and the first one is in the works, and probably will get started in the fall, so that'll be a good way to do that, and we'll hear more about that as that unfolds. And then a few things coming up and events that you ought to have on your calendar, September 13th is Jazz Walk, so we're encouraged to come to that, of course. The date hasn't been set for the holiday party, nor for the pool party, and I would encourage you to come to that, just, I just came last year for, or earlier this year, just for a little while, but it's nice to make an appearance, and I talked to a number of parents, and they found out who I was. And, of course, that was before the election, so I'm, you know, anyway. So, but something they're gonna do this year is there, what's been, what is not, what people have not been responding to as much is the youth scholarship pillar of the, of the...
Oh, interesting.
Of the campaign. So, a brochure's being put together, and they are shifting the splash party to earlier in... in the day, so that there will be people who will come that won't just be scholarship recipient folk, but whoever comes that day will find out what it's about, also get a chance to get, get one of the brochures, and that, plus those brochures are going to be in any outreach event that's done by, that's done by the foundation. The annual dinner, location is being changed. They are looking at locations, not at the usual spot, but possibly at Stone Creek, or the Broadway Food Hall, but nothing is set in stone yet. But it was something that I had discussed with the foundation earlier, and I was very pleased that there was that kind of response. Barn Bash is scheduled for May 15th. Nothing like looking ahead, but it's scheduled for May 15th, and Brian Moline of W I L L is going to be the, going to be the emcee, so, and they're doing some kind of craft beer thing for the grand, the grand reopening of Crystal Lake Park, so that hasn't been scheduled yet.
Events committee in pitching new ideas for fundraisers or activity, how do we refocus people on, let's say, Crystal Lake Park as a site?
Yeah.
And so, having an event there and trying to put something together, one idea was combining craft beer with some other activities, and so it's in the formulation stages.
People talking to Riggs?
I think it's, the events group is, yeah, kind of working on that.
Yeah, I mean, that would be perfect since they're Urbana, Urbana business, that would be great.
Right, and then I think Sarah, our foundation intern, had, our staff had done quite a bit of research on other craft beer events in the area, region, in the neighboring
Great.
Near, about, the whereabouts, so, just, I think what we can learn is there's still room for more of that, even if there's some going on around you. They seem to be popular activities that people like and will show up for, and it also reaches another demographic, so.
I think, I think the fundraising, or the events committee is really being creative.
I do, too. I think they're really doing a great job.
Megan's doing a really good job.
Yes, yes, she is. That's my report. Great. Well, you want to tell them how much we did for this update?
Nothing.
Yeah, the planning group, what we let, we met last April, yeah.
Yep.
Our topics for upcoming update meetings for next year, the next year, the update planning study group is expected in January.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I know that it's on the, on the agenda each month, but it's certainly not a group that needs to meet, not like finance. Right. All right, old business. So, yeah, this is you. We need to take action on ordinance 2019-05, the combined budget and appropriation ordinance.
And before you take official action on that, everybody should have received the budget book in your binder, and I thought I could just quickly page through some of the important pages of that, so that you'd have a, just a brief look at it if you haven't already read it, cover to cover.
Go ahead.
So, inside the budget book, so the budget book is, includes our ordinance information in addition to the printed ordinance that is in the packet, but this really is our budget document that has all of the details of how we've budgeted for the coming year. So, the contents is in the beginning, followed by a list of commissioners and staff, there's our organizational vision, mission, and values, followed by our most current organizational chart on page four. After that is about 25 pages of goals, so that starts on page five, and you can see our district-wide goals are the first few pages, and then the departmental goals follow that. Page 29 is a listing of our staff budgeted, our staff inventory as budgeted, and it's kind of a nice little view of how our staffing numbers change year to year, so it has three years of history in it. And then we start getting into the more financial side of the budget book. So, page 31 begins the description of funds. These include our new fund numbers, so all of our numbering system has changed now, so, and they've also been reordered to be in numerical order as well, so they're just in a little different order, but all the same funds that we've had in the past still exist, and they're all there. After that is, on page 34, is our current tax rate for 2019 and the prior 10 years as well, so this is the tax rate for all of Urbana on page 34, and then on page 38 and 39 has our specific tax rate on it just for Urbana Park District, but you can see, depending on the price of your home, how, what to expect for your own tax bill, and what portion of that tax bill is applicable to the park district only. On page 36 is a list of the applicable tax levies that the park district is legally allowed to extend, and which ones we take, we have on our extension, and which ones we do not. And then, and page 37 is a list of our total expected tax dollars to be received for the Urbana Park District, and then, like I said, page 39, at the bottom of 39, is the 2019 tax rate, 1.2283. Then there's a little bit of EAV history that goes through all of the changes and how our EAV has changed. We had a 4.58% increase in our EAV for this fiscal year. Then diving into that, our budget and appropriation ordinance information is on page 41. This is exactly the information in summary form that's in the ordinance that you'll be approving. Basically, the budget appropriation ordinance is exactly the same as our operating budget, with the addition of some miscellaneous expenditures and miscellaneous revenues as a buffer for any additional revenues that might be received, and so that we would also be authorized to spend those revenues as they would come in. So, but otherwise, the budget information on page 42 is, is our actual budget. This is what's in the following pages. So, this is where the colorful charts are that you've seen several times.
We were really sorry you were here to miss the first, the first presentation of these.
Oh, yeah.
I thought about you.
Thanks. So, these are the charts that are typically at this section in the budget, but it shows a breakdown of our revenues and operating expenditures, and then on page 44 and 45 is just what we would usually call some 1 and some 2. So, this is just our operating budget that doesn't include capital, and then down below is just capital, and the colorful graphs on the side are the operating budget, some 1 graphs. So, that kind of takes the capital out of it, since we do, that really inflates what we're looking at, so this really shows the rest of our day-to-day activities. Okay, so then after that is just budget printout pages from the new system. There's some other sprinkling of information in there. When you get to the bond fund, there's a schedule of all our bond payments. When you get to the capital improvements fund, there's a schedule of all our capital budgets. So, there's a few other pieces of information sprinkled in. It starts off with summary pages that are the same as you usually see, along with the board reports, so some 1, some 2, some 3, and then for each fund, there's a summary page, and they're labeled that, it says fund summary. So, for example, at the top of page 49, you can see the general fund is the fund summary page, and then following that is the detailed department, departmental pages. So, this is a similar format as to how it used to be printed as well, with Carla's work with the old budget books, she would have a summary page, and then the detailed by department as well. I just had to do a little bit more finagling to get it to print the way I wanted it to, but this is how, you know, I'm open to your feedback, and I can try to work with the system to change it. I don't really like how much, how, it's just messier than Carla's was. It has all the numbers, like, these are the numbering system for how these appropriations are laid out, and I think that's really distracting, but because I look at them every day, I'm used to seeing it now, so maybe just if you read it cover to cover, you'll, it says expert as me.
Activated.
So, I'm happy to go through this in more detail. If anybody has any questions at any time, I'm happy to meet with you, go through it. I just wanted to make sure everyone had a gist of how the budget is laid out in this book, and it takes a lot of time and effort to put this together, so hopefully you enjoy it, as much as I do.
It looks great.
It looks great.
I'm happy with how it came together.
So, I move to approve ordinance 2019-05, the combined budget and appropriation ordinance.
Second. Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. That's it, all four ayes. All right, I don't believe we took anything out of the consent agenda, so we have nothing in item B under 10. New business, Carl Foundation donation agreement.
So, I've been talking about this for a little bit. We finally have gotten everything put together. The nutshell of the agreement is that for five years, 2019 through 23, we will receive $100,000 for outreach and wellness programming. The agreement itself goes through all five years of those. You can see in the agreement, and you've probably heard me talk, the first year is broken down pretty thoroughly on where the funds are going for this year. Future years, it will be like we did this one, we'll be working with Carl staff and giving them ideas on where we want to, to spend the dollars each year, and then they will approve that and send us a check. It's not something that will come here necessarily each year. The agreement's set for the five years, just a matter of us working together to plan on where the money will be spent. Just a quick rough view of this year, 55,000 is going to the mobile park vehicle. That includes purchasing, wrapping of the vehicle, stocking vehicle with recreation supplies and equipment, and then there's $5,000 in there to help with staffing costs of bringing the vehicle to our neighborhoods. There's also a $5,000 donation towards the backpack, Freeway Backpack Event, so that would be very handy to help out with all the backpacks, all the youth coming to the pool afterwards at the, at the event, so. Then there's 25,000 towards Play RX slash Carl Scholarship Fund to grant 100% fee reduction and park district program costs. I believe I mentioned this to you guys in previous meetings, but what we're doing with this program, first of all, Play RX has been kind of reinvented. One of the things that we were seeing.
I don't even know what it is to begin with, so.
Okay, so Play RX is through public health.
Okay.
And individuals will come, they will have an evaluation, it deals with a lot of obesity, and then they can get into a program at public health, and the goal for us, or where we come in, is we're allowing individuals to join a program. In the past, they haven't been able to go to the pools, because that's, we just haven't been able to offer that. We've been offering more of the sports-type programming that it doesn't make as big an impact if, you know, you have 10 kids on a soccer team and one is free. So, we've been picking those sports that are larger program sports, but with this new program, we are offering up pool memberships, and these, and those were at free, free to cost as well, the Play RX program. But this, now that we're, we have these funds, we're also offering pool memberships, which we think was a big deterrent of why we weren't getting a lot of people, because we don't have, like, membership-type opportunities. Champagne Park District's been a little more successful in the Play RX program, because they have places like the Leonard Center that they can allow individuals to sign up for a membership that way.
But they also had limitations on aquatics and indoor tennis for those same reasons, to, you know, where, where can you absorb easy without impact, cost and impact?
So, why we also call it Carl Scholarship is because it's not only going to be part of the play, we have this $25,000, and we've already, 4,000 or 5,000's already been handed out in some of our outreach programming, so we have registration forms there at a play day in the park, they can come up, don't have to show us anything, they have to sign up and give us information, so we can put them in our system, but we then give them a certificate, letting them know, here's where you need to be, and this is the program you're in.
Wow.
And then we take these Carl, the Carl donation, and we use those funds to support the programs that we're doing, so.
That's pretty terrific.
What's the age group?
There is no age group.
There is none, okay.
So, all, all levels?
Well, especially with the pool passes, it's family passes, because that's how we want kids to come. We don't want them coming individually.
Oh, that's great.
But in terms of other programs, it's all levels? Anyone who is a value, or is it mostly kids?
It's mainly kids at this point. Again, we're, we don't know how far the dollars will go. We want to spend all the dollars, but we don't want to spend them in the first four weeks either, so.
You know, have 30 adults receive scol, and then have 60 children that couldn't go, you know, just based on adult dynamics.
So, would we, would we include the recipients of these scholarships in our, in the UPF event?
Absolutely, we should.
I would think we should.
They're being recorded.
It's all being recorded.
Right. I think our goal is to recognize, you know, where we get resource and celebrate those, you know, people that are helping us, so.
Exactly.
I think it makes a lot of sense to me.
So, it's, it's another avenue for us to break down some of the scholarship process.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
So, you know, we're, we're pretty excited about it, and it, so far, it's working out well. I know there was, just Saturday, there was two families that had received passes, and they were there getting their passes at the pool, so.
That's great.
You know, and then the last 15,000 is towards outreach and wellness programming, and, you know, that's part of, you know, we meet with Imano Estates, and they, they want a program or something, or we're working with CU Fair, so that's going to be a new event, so. So, giving us some opportunities to be able to say yes, even in a bigger way than what we've been able to do.
That's terrific. This is an extraordinarily generous nation in the first place, and I mean, it's, it's nice that it's being spread over so many people in so many different terrific ways.
Just want to add, obviously, staff's worked really hard on this, so has the Carl staff. You know, this has been about a year and a half's worth of work, starting from pre-planning to, Derek and I had an opportunity to visit with Carl and make a pitch to enlist their help, and they took it in-house and gave it consideration, and came back with a yes, and wanted to go in this direction. Obviously, we have a lot of needs, so we welcome any of these opportunities, but to really be able to touch in this way, it's really digging and drilling down deep, so I think it's going to make a big, big difference.
Yeah.
And we appreciate, you know, working with Carl and just having that opportunity to, you know, put Urbana first, so we're very pleased.
I sure, I also forgot to mention, I mentioned it last month, but when we take the mobile park vehicle out, in a lot of cases, we'll be there with the Carl mobile unit.
Yeah.
And we'll be there with public health, mobile unit.
Yeah, that's so terrific.
And the food pantry, I mean, or the.
The U-VI. The extension office.
Yeah, that's phenomenal.
So.
So, do you have a schedule of where you're going to be?
Well, we got to get the vehicle first.
Yes, that is important.
So, our plan was to, yeah, obviously, we're going to have a calendar for each month, especially in the summertime, we'll have a calendar of where we're going to be and on what nights.
Okay.
That's the ultimate plan. Because it's July, it's probably going to be, you know, a little pushed back from us getting that underway, because we have to order it.
Were you, excuse me, talking about the food program or the park access? The park vehicle? I just didn't know if we had your, got your right answer.
I guess kind of both, but the food program, I know we talked about last board meeting, so that's underway?
Yes, Tuesdays is Crestview, Thursdays is Victory.
That was the schedule I thought you might have been asking about.
And that was kind of a, more of a pilot, since we didn't have a, a park vehicle, and we're not going around as much, we thought this would be, and public health and final extension thought that'd be a good pilot to get it started this summer, so.
So, obviously, we need to sign, we need to approve the gift agreement in order to move forward, but was there a timeline in terms of, like, purchasing the vehicle, and when do we think we could have it up, and?
Mr. Leonard's already signed the copy that's in the file.
Okay.
So, once we sign, I'll get that back to them tomorrow, and hopefully, at that point, I think I'll be safe to start working on getting the order. I won't have the money like that, but we can move forward.
They can buy a shop for a car anyway.
Yeah, I didn't want to spend before.
Understood.
Excellent, that is really terrific.
The other part of that is, we're going to start planning for next year now.
Right.
Indeed.
But we welcome the involvement.
Well, I approve, I move to...
I approve as well.
I move to approve the Carl Foundation donation agreement.
Second.
Any more discussion? All right, we need a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Excellent. All right, we need...
Revised capital budgets?
Yep, yep, I got it. Revised capital budgets.
Okay, July is one of our months that we normally do our budget revisions. Katie and I went through all of our capital years and have provided the attachments with highlighted sections for approval tonight. I'll start with 2017 capital budget, this is revision number five. Starting from the top, you'll see that we have a donation, Ambucks improvements now been adjusted to reflect actual donation. Moving down into our expenditures section, the technology, remaining funds from our older technology, 2017 and 2018 are being moved towards Crystal Lake projects, and in 2019, we're maintaining our $20,000 technology line. We've just built up a lot over the years, so we've started to move some to a more pressing project at the moment. In the contingency section down towards the very bottom, we've removed our general contingency and closed out projects that are associated with Binkard and the bioswells, and then moved those funds after they've been closed out into our Crystal Lake improvements section of that contingency line. Moving to 2018, this is revision number three. We had our, starting from the top in the revenue section, finalized expenditures for Pool Pack and our 103 gross box purchase and demo, and then we've had an additional donation for Ambucks Burns Tribute, and then you'll see in the auction of the two-ton dump truck, we received that $4,489.
That was so clever.
Last December. Moving down towards the expenditure section, you see our technology line that was $10,000 has now been closed out and moved to CLP improvements. That Pool Pack, again, just reflecting from the revenue section, as well as the additional $100 in the Ambucks donations. We had our purchase for the one-ton dump truck, we used some of the additional funds from our auction of the two-ton for Showmobile, and then we have our $75,000 in the very bottom, a general contingency that will remain, and then we've closed out the other projects and moved them into our Crystal Lake Improvements section. Okay, 2019, this is revision number three. You'll see in the revenue section, we have our $300,000 general fund transfer, and this is shown below in the expenditures sections, is $100,000 for the Lille Park improvements, expanded parking, path improvements, the $25,000 for Health and Wellness feasibility study, and then in the Crystal Lake Park Improvement section, $175,000 for the CLP Rehab Phase Two project. Up, moving back up top towards the revenue section, again, we had our grant funds received, I think Katie had mentioned earlier, for $2,800 for the Illinois American Water, and then you'll see the final expenditure for the Showmobile, and that's it.
All right, somebody want to make a motion?
I move to approve revision number five to the 2017 capital improvement budget, revision number three to the 2018 capital improvement budget, and revision number three to the 2019 capital improvement budget.
Second.
All right, anybody want anything more to say about it? All right, then we will start. Roger, do you want to start the roll call roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That moves us along to the saline. It's only been going since 2002.
I was going to do an introduction, and I thought maybe we just move on to the main focus. Probably familiar with where we've kind of been over the years, but certainly, it's an effort.
Is there anything longer running than this? This is just incredible.
KRT.
I'd say it's just a KRT.
With the KRT, at least, has made progress.
Or open and running.
We're on the precipice of really making improvement.
Yes, sounds like it.
So, you know, a little bit of background for viewers at home, I guess, we have, we've been working with IDNR Living Waters Consultants, University of Illinois, to develop a project for habitat restoration within the saline creek at Crystal Lake Park. It's being funded entirely by IDNR, and it's through settlement funds that were received from an ammonia spill at the University of Illinois campus during boiler cleaning 20, or what is it, 18 years ago? 19, 17 years ago?
Yeah, long time.
I think last year, or two years ago, the plan was for IDNR to perform the construction activities. They had a change due to some budget freeing up and moving their priorities for their construction crew, so then we needed to change plans and tried to bid the project out, because the procurement process through the state of Illinois is very long, very lengthy. We were asked to be the procuring agent, so we've, we've worked with IDNR and consulted with Matt Dearing as well, and this IGA that you have in front of you tonight, that's basically providing the $225,000 in funds for the project. That would include the construction of the rock riffles, three rock riffles and three double point deflectors, primarily on the portion of the saline below the sledding hill near Broadway Avenue. Will include like 150 feet of stream bank stabilization that'll focus on that portion below the sledding hill as well. And then any funds remaining will be used for engineering oversight, contingency, invasive species removal, planting and vegetation maintenance. IDNR is still serving as the lead project manager, will assist in oversight of the project as well. They will improve, they will approve all invoices and change orders, and then, once we have that approval, we'll process for payment. Like I said, we have the IGA tonight for $225,000, and any remaining funds would be returned to IDNR once the project's complete.
Spend it all.
So this is on what side of the hill, the sledding hill?
It'd be the southern bank.
North side or south side?
The south bank of the saline.
There's a section just past the curve where the concrete armoring stops, and past that, the creek is eroding to places where it's pretty sheer, and it's falling into the creek, and so this will help to armor that. Initially, they thought they might have to do up to 600 linear feet, we're now thinking about 150, we'll cover what we need. Part of that initial 600 linear feet was, we wanted to provide some compensatory storage for the rock going in the creek, we're already about flooding, but through further review that work that was done by the University of Illinois, we determined that it wasn't necessary to reduce flooding, but we are actually, because the rock only affects flood stage at very low levels of water flow, as the creek gets higher, it's inconsequential. The good news is that even with this 150 linear feet, we will drop the flood stage some, so we should, in theory, experience less flooding as a result of this project.
Great, cool.
I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Natural Resources for the Stream Restoration and ReVegetation Construction Coordination Project at Crystal Lake Park.
Second.
Any discussion? More discussion? All right, you get to start.
Aye.
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 Okay, all right, that's it. Item D, action to conditionally award saline habitat restoration.
Part two.
Okay, so I'll repeat myself entirely from the beginning there, but we did end up bidding this project in May, and I had a bid opening on June 5th, four companies ended up submitting bids, and they all came in higher than the amount of funds that we had available through IDNR for the project. So due to the limited amount of funds, our project team convened and prioritized the bid items and used the provided bid quantities that were within the bid document to have a reduction in the overall scope of the project, but still maintain the overall goals for IDNR and for the Park District as well. So we took that revised scope and had it reviewed, and it was approved by our low bidder, Semper Phi, and it will, it's now within the $225,000 total project budget per the IGA. So what we're recommending tonight is that we conditionally award the project to Semper Phi pending an executed IGA and receipt of the funds from them as well. So once we have those funds in hand and an executed IGA, then we begin to execute our construction contract documents with Semper Phi. We just want to make sure we have the funds before we sign anything else.
Money in hand.
Yeah, money in the bank.
I'll mention that, you know, we were a bit concerned about the budget from the get-go, it's part of why we were hoping the state could do this work in-house, and when we lost that, we became more concerned, and so we were already sort of planning for the possibility that we may not have enough funds. DNR had begun working with the university to model and make sure that we would be okay if we didn't do the entire 600 linear feet. So this is, I think, a real positive that we were able to get a project in with the funds at hand, and Semper Phi is someone that's done this type of work up in the Chicagoland area, they asked a lot of good questions at the pre-bid, and they've been good to work with in looking at their bids to get into a project that we can award, so feel very positive. They've worked with Ted Gray before, and they have resulted in good work.
Yeah, that's a good sign.
I just want to add, again, kudos to everybody on our staff team and the DNR staff team, you know, these are the kind of projects that probably could have easily been shifted away at any point due to bureaucracy or challenges or financial. The tenacity of everybody's continued to come to the table, even though things shifted and focuses, in the end, there was still a commitment by all the parties to see that something could be done in a positive way to reflect the initial incident. And so with that, I think we're pleased, as Derek suggested. Certainly, we'd love to see a lot more of the creek done, we wish it could have went further, that the budgets were larger, but given what they had to work with, what was really in the scope, and will it be an improvement, you know, to the saline, it's real, you know, ending in a positive note. Obviously, the hard work now of getting the project going and started and complete still have to be done, but it's amazing we're, at this point, you know, tonight approving these things, so.
I'm...
Go ahead.
I move to conditionally award the saline habitat restoration project in the amount of $181,483 and a contingency of $32,167 to Semper Phi of Yorkville, Illinois, pending an executed intergovernmental agreement and receipt of the project funds from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources.
Second.
All right, anybody have anything more they want to say about it? All right, roll call. Roger, do you want to start?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's it. We didn't take anything out, new business from the consent agenda, right? So we're good to go. Commissioner comments?
I just want to thank everyone and my fellow commissioners for attending Jettie Rose Day. We really appreciate it, really appreciate the support, and I'm glad, you know, especially for, I mean, the work that staff puts into it, but also the other commissioners can kind of see the work that goes into the event, so I just want to say thank you for that. Also, I received an email about the backpack yesterday from Ms. McFarland, so I did a blast yesterday and touched base with a couple of contacts with the school district, so I expect that it will be a great turnout.
Great.
So looking forward to that.
Good. We appreciate that.
I want to thank you for including me in the barbecue cook-off tasting. That was a very nice part of Jettie Rose, and it was, it was great to see, it was a huge turnout, and it's grown, it's been a long time since I've been there, and it's changed a lot, all for the positive, I think. It's really growing, growing into its own in a lot of different groups there, it was just, I thought it was just terrific, it's really a good thing for us to be able to participate in that. Almost every day, I drive by the corner of Broadway and Park Street, and I don't believe there's a time I've gone by when I have not seen someone sitting on those blocks.
I see walkers and youths.
It is just incredible to me.
Yeah.
I mean, I would never see people on that corner, and now there is always somebody, and I mean, part of it, obviously, is the time of day that I'm there, but it is remarkable, and you can just see what that's going to do to that corner. I mean, it's already looking good, even though it's not looking good. It's, yeah, the bones, the skeleton is there, and it's just going to be nothing but fleshed out into wonderfulness, and it's, it's really terrific.
It is nice.
I think it really points to the power of trails, too, because as soon as the fence, or before the fence has come down, people are on it already. The grading hadn't even been red to the store, and there were what I would call traffic moving along the corridor, so it's really exciting. We look forward to the ribbon cutting and sort of the, you know, official stuff, so staff will be working on that. Certainly want to have Carl there to join us and everybody that was involved.
I wanted to give kudos to Ground for the work that they did with all the tree damage. I mean, a tornado, then another major windstorm, and over the weekend, a beautiful big shag bark hickory came down on the Sculpture Garden Trail, and boy, once I got to it yesterday, boom, it was gone, and they've put in a lot of work, and I want to express my appreciation to them for that.
I'll pass that on, thank you, Roger.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess I got what I needed. I can go home. That's seven, it's only 8:30, and probably the third inning of the, what is it, the All-Star game, yeah, yeah.
Thanks, everybody.